We have on our table today one table matter and four scheduled matters. We have proof of legal publication for all items here. Corporate attendants?
Jim Spantinata.
Mr. Howza?
I'm here.
Mr. Short?
Here.
Mr. Lagnier?
Here.
Mr. Spantinata?
Here again.
Mr. DeMarco?
Here.
Mr. Tuso?
Here. Do you all stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Here.
Pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and eternal.
There are two matters. 1599 Ridge Road, which was tabled till this month, the applicant has requested to table this matter till May 14th, board meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
And officially, item number two on our scheduled matters, Willow Lane accessory structure located at 671 Willow Lane, is also being tabled until the May 14th zoning board meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Who wants to raise their hand?
Alright, Colorado Drive Pool House addition, located at 286 Colorado Drive. Applicant Scott Mitchell is requesting area areas to allow a second accessory structure where only one is permitted, associated with the relocation and expansion of an existing treehouse built on six-foot-by-six-foot posts from its current location to the pool area on a 2.0 acre parcel, having SPL number 078.10-23 located in an R3 single-family residential district under section 350-36 of the Code of the Towne Law Street.
How's it going?
Good, how are you?
Good. Tell us a little bit about your project?
Sure. So, what do you want to flip through?
We got it right here.
We got it. So, we had built a treehouse for our kids a couple of years ago. It's since grown. It's not getting used and we want to drop it down and move it up to the pool and make it like a changing room for the pool.
There are any street lamps?
Aye.
I have a question. So, the application said to move the treehouse to the pool and an addition of 312 feet, 176 square feet covered.
Yep.
Can you explain that a little bit more? I was going through the plans and it just, I was struggling to come up with what you're trying to do. I saw the picture of the treehouse, I was like, great. So, this elevation here, and I believe the hatched area is where the treehouse was, but then I see the covered area, so...
So, I'm just gonna extend the roof line over, it'll be 22 feet over and 8 foot back.
So, it's not enlarging the enclosed area of the treehouse, it is just extending the roof line of the treehouse, is what you're doing?
Yep.
Okay.
Just post in our roof.
Gotcha, okay. And then my other question, so, this plan, which, yep, that one, is, this is the roof framing plan, I'm assuming?
That's the deck. I have to do a deck because it's pitched down.
Okay, gotcha.
It's a deck.
Okay. And that 14-foot crocheted area is in concrete, then?
No, it's decking.
That's decking as well.
Yep.
Okay. Unfortunately, I was not able to get onto your site. Do you already have some sheds already on the property, is that correct?
There's one barn out there.
There's one barn, okay. Looking at this, it looks like a rain shed and wherever, it looks like there's three, is that...
Yeah, but the previous owner had sort of added on and added on.
Gotcha. Any questions, comments on the board?
Josh, it's considered a second accessory structure because of the added covered area, because the treehouse would be shed size, but the added roof makes it sort of footageized a little bit now, we consider it a second accessory structure.
Correct.
So, as far as enclosed, it's really not going to be anymore on the property benefits right now.
Correct.
Just moving it up a little bit.
Obviously converting the treehouse to a cabin with a 1.5 billion, that's a dance floor. You have any questions for the board?
I need to have a chance to speak with you, but I did peek over the fence and looked out.
Yeah, I didn't tell you I'm a ring.
Always late. I know there's a lot of trees there, is this going to interfere with any, are you going to take down any trees to...
No, no, there's no trees all around the pool.
Alright, I'll turn up to the public, everybody has any comments? Any comments from the public, from the board, comments from the board? Alright, board on the secret resolution? Make a motion for type 2 action in the secret pursuant to NCOR section 6175, 617.5 of the Environmental Code for Colorado Drive Pool House in addition.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion for variance?
I can go through the findings. I'll say that it's not out of character with the neighborhood, the treehouse is already there, it's just being relocated and lowered. It's not a detriment to any of the nearby properties where the pool is located, it's really not going to be even in the line of sight of any of the contingent properties. Benefit not achieved by any other method. The structure's already there, it's just finding another location for it. It's also not substantial and will not create any adverse or physical or environmental impacts to the surroundings of the neighborhood. It's going to be primarily open space with just the enclosed cabin area that's currently just an enclosed treehouse and it'll be inert as far as the neighborhood concerns. So, with that, if nobody has anything else to add to it, make a motion to grant an area variance to allow a second accessory structure of a pool house slash cabin associated with the relocation of the existing treehouse and moved to up against the pool with additional square footage added on a 2.0 acre parcel with SPL number 078.10-1-23 located in an R3 single-family residential district.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, you have your variance, I'll try and run through this. I'm not seeing anything this time. Alright, you have your variance, you have six months to obtain full permits and the structure complete, one year? Six months? Sorry, one year. I feel like I'm missing something. What's that?
Building permit.
Oh, building, we will need the building permit. Alright, good luck and enjoy the pool house.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Your settlement is tabled to Gallow Circle.
Yep.
Gallow Circle Privacy Fence located at 541 Gallow Circle. Applicant Nathan Four is requesting area areas to allow a 10-foot tall privacy fence on the lot line where 15-foot setback is required, associated with the installation of approximately 147 linear feet of privacy fence on a 0.50 acre parcel with SPL number 078.12-2-3 located in an R3 single-family residential district under section 350-79 of the Code of the Towne Law Street.
How's it going?
Good, how are you?
Good. Nice to see you here.
Yeah, also this is my wife, Alexandra.
Nice to meet you. Mind writing your project for us?
Yeah, sure, I'm looking to build a privacy fence along the rear of our property. There is a gutter that you see on there as well, that we want to enclose the entire backyard so that gutter will connect to the pool fence that is not displayed on here, but it is the attempt of that little piece. We're requesting the additional height on the property line due to the differences in grade between our property and rear property. We're not allowed the rear property to be at least three or four feet higher, that's not there exactly. And then this, I said, the tower we're looking at, it's left to the title, so we're looking to build a fence to control our...
Yeah, so one of the pictures too, that picture right there shows what our backyard used to look like in August of last year. Basically, our backyard neighbor has cleared out those trees and brush that was on his property. So, I've included a few different pictures that show different trailers, different trucks that are parked back there. Currently, right now, part of that fence is actually taken down, so it's even kind of more exposed and there's more brush. But basically, with the different trucks and trailers coming in and out, that happens almost daily, and then the other sort of equipment that's being stored there, and then the height difference is kind of why we're looking for the fence, just to be able to have privacy in our backyard and be able to enjoy our pool area and backyard.
As you see, the pine trees there, the previous owner of this property tried to place or plant some pine trees with all the shade and anything covered would die, so, you know, otherwise these are out there. And then, or English and anything like that, privacy lies, we're only looking for stuff for some of us. That's why we're looking for a structure, just something good.
Additionally, too, that kind of area of our property retains a lot of water as well, just with it being at a lower grade. So, that's another concern as well, trying to plant different things, being able to sustain growth. So, that's why we're looking for the fence, also too, looking for like a permanent solution all year round and then... So, like I mentioned, the owner behind us has taken down part of this fence. Unfortunately, there also has been a part that has been down since last year, so I think to be able to put something, be able to, you know, control and fix it when it needs, that is also something that we're looking to do.
I know you've already mentioned your wife, I believe you mentioned your wife's name, you could just mention your name.
Yeah, my first name is Alexandra and last name is Lolo.
Thank you, appreciate it. Do I want to start off with any questions or comments on the application?
Considering the fact that I'm seeing why it's still a man, he has a 10-foot high fence. So, I understand that we are exploring the situation for maybe it's possible to survive. I don't like fences. This face, I wish a bunch of next of neighbor to pay for the installation of that fence. We have a good family who still has...
I do want to be able to show.
If you want to give an overview of the context of what's going on from the county's perspective, so it's kind of joined with the application.
Sure.
So, yes, the property owner at 941 Rebel Road was issued a special use permit many years ago for a major home occupation. And within the past, let's say eight or nine months or so, the town began receiving complaints from the adjoining neighbors based upon the fill activity and the loss of the vegetation that was once there. So, we do have an active open co-pilation on the property associated with the storage of the recreational vehicles. And we are going to be exploring bringing the owner of 941 Rebel Road back in to, for this board to re-review the special permit and the conditions that were imposed back in 2011, which did require that all of the equipment associated with the business be stored in the numerous outbuildings that are on the property. So, it was heard earlier this month in court, it was adjourned to next month because the owner indicated they reparked everything in a code compliant location. But again, we are exploring the original conditions imposed on home occupation permit and bringing it back to the board maximum for further consideration. There wasn't any code violations in respect to straining the vegetation, correct? No, there were no specific code violations associated with that. So, even subsequent to a prosecution, for lack of a better term, with respect to the adjoining property, even if it comes into compliance with the visual that we're seeing now of this greenery?
Yes, it was. And the approach that's there, all that based on what I understand, should all be parked inside the park, not on the property.
Correct. I also think it was a sound point, again, the individual Jacob or was that was screened because of a lot of vegetation he had on this property, and now the screening is on.
Right, between the vegetation and the fence that was there, there was a six-foot fence. People have screened it for the most part from the neighbors. I don't know that we ever received noise complaints until maybe recently, but all the screening that gave the cushion that the business...
There was quite a bit of...
Yeah, it was, it was a thick, it was a fence, it was a very dense hedge rock, yeah.
When was the vegetation taken?
So, the vegetation shown in that one picture that I included, that was taken down last summer, at the end of August. There have been a numerous amount of trees that have fallen as well that have been around the property line within the last, I think, year or so, there's been three major trees that have fallen, one has fallen and crushed my shed, one has fallen and crushed our neighbor's property as well, and then one actually fell on his property, and there are trees that are right on the property line. So, those are three big ones, and then all that brush from that one picture has not carried out since the pocket.
Yeah, so right in the corner of the pool fence, where there's a big empty spot on the ground, that's where our shed used to be, that's screened a little bit of as well, that's no longer there.
And then, yeah, as far as like, I know, I guess, as far as like noise complaints, I have definitely made some in the past. I think there's a lot of other things with the special use permit, like, I know there's a timing that the noise can start, I believe at 7:30 in the morning, I documented it starting beforehand, but, I mean, for the sake of, I guess, this meeting today, that's a separate issue, but I guess we're just really trying to look at from a visual perspective right now, but there definitely are some other issues that can be frustrating at times with the situation.
Yeah, even if they are parked and stored somewhere else, they can use that area as a turnaround day and night, so, you know, without a fence or anything blocking it, they go and turn the trucks around, sometimes idle there for five or six minutes, that's going to break inside our house, break inside our neighbor's houses as well.
Yeah, and as late as like 9:30 at night, also pretty early in the morning as well. Also, there are trucks that are parked there, I mean, I'm not sure if order came out today, there was a truck parked back there today, there's also a trailer parked back there today. Unfortunately, it seems like they just are always kind of coming and going, so... Unfortunately, it seems like they just are always kind of coming and going, so.
Yeah. I feel, I love your opinion as well. I can believe fences make good neighbors on one hand. A 10-foot fence is a big fence, but there's, there's a 24, 30-inch big difference between your property and the neighbor's property. Like, their specially used variance is definitely a component of this, right? They weren't using that for specially used home occupancy variance. They wouldn't have trucks there, they wouldn't have all that traffic in and out happening at that location. So my, I'm struggling because I feel for you, and if I was you, I'd be standing in your situation as well. On another hand, it's, it's not, it's not your cause, it's a cause from them not following the, the special use that was outlined for that. Yeah, that's a, that's a tough one.
I went back there again today. I walked the property line between 541 Galbro and a couple of the other parcels Sunday afternoon, and then went back there today with a tape measure just to get a height for my own mind. And the difference between the grade of the property at 541 Galbro and the rear neighbor on Grabble is at least two feet. And for a good portion of it, it's a good 36 inches, 35 to 37 inches. And even if the equipment goes away, the lot has been filled with a bunch of construction debris and a bunch of garbage and asphalt, scrapings from roads and concrete pylons. And I don't think there's anything that's going to happen from the perspective of the rear property owner that's willing to make that view any better than the fence. And while, when I read the application initially, 10-foot fences obviously quite tall, when I stood there, I don't know that the 10-foot fence is quite tall enough, but it'll certainly, it'll, it'll buffer the headlights from the vehicles, it'll buffer the view, they will at least not see all of the garbage that right now is right at level with their deck. So if you sit up there with a cup of coffee, you're looking at, basically, you're sitting next to the city dump.
Yep.
There's just a lot of construction debris, tires, and so separate from even the extra trailers being parked there, it's, it's, I think the fence is the only thing that's going to screen it at this point in time. Nothing will grow there to plant it to show that either between the water that is now running through the back yards or just the impervious surface that's even in there.
What style of fence are you proposing?
Would it be like a good neighbor, both sides would look the same?
Like a board-on-board type of?
Yeah, yours, yeah.
I kind of agree with Corinne. It's a sad situation back there. I do feel sorry for you. And I, I do agree that a fence would help. A 10-foot fence, like you were saying, it will help, it will buffer. You'll still see the tops of some of the vehicles and things. But I do agree that I think a fence is probably the best solution to their situation.
Any other questions from the board? Anybody from the public? Okay. Got it, I got it. Come on up.
Oh, we're there?
Yep, please.
Can you introduce myself?
Yep, please.
My name is Olga Buzorka, I'm the next door neighbor to them. I'm 545 Builder Circle. Two of us are getting the best view of this nightmare. The one thing I would dispute is that it's only been last eight or nine months that this has come up. I personally have been to town multiple times over decades. I moved in 98. So I've been there for a while so I can give you all the stories of what inspired in, you know, 25 years' span. And he, I know he was given special use permit. He violated every single point of that. I understand that right now he uses vehicles, but that was very out of court. And I have zero confidence that he'll comply with that once everybody kind of moves on because that has been the case every single time. So, you know, I get the privilege of looking at that as well. I'm really the only neighbor, I think, probably as a consideration as far as any negative impact because I'm literally right, so my property is right next.
Are you the property that I did trigger?
Yes, so yeah, my property, I mean, we can bring this up, that, you know, that's really not necessarily.
No, I'm just trying to place your location.
Yeah, I'm the one who was dealing with deciding that fence damaged because he was allowed, retractively, his still permit and I think has been done to comply with that fill permit. And the trees are dying and I'm still a threat, right? So right now, I'm trying to rebuild my property, but he's supposed to take down these trees, which he didn't. And there are trees that will be right damaging again if something comes down because they and the tree actually said that. So anyway, my point was that I think geographically speaking, I'm the only affected person in this situation and I'm in full support. You know, because we, we both have suffered enough and just like Alex, I have, I literally have a YouTube channel, right? Where, because that's the only way I can communicate videos, right, to the town, the six o'clock in the morning, you know, dump trucks dumping things, all the dipping, you know, the bobcats, the front loaders, even dumping and it's terrible. So I would go in front of disagree with, but the sad is that it's only been last eight or nine months, I would say it's the last eight or nine months, with the arrival of the new town local enforcement, Jim Montgomery, that hasn't been anything done about it up until this point. I can tell you, the previous owner, our bad house, myself, multiple neighbors in our neighborhood came to the town and nothing has been done about it. So it's only getting worse and worse and worse and worse. So as the only affected person, I'm full supporter of them.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Any, any other questions?
Oh, good, thank you.
I'm Dave Maliki, Flash 63, Yalbo Circle. I don't really know them too very well, but I think I've dated them. Yeah, I've never visited either property. When you look at the properties, I know where it is, what is this property right, mine's about five down from there.
You said 563 is what you said?
Yeah.
Your name again, sorry.
David Maliki, M.A.L.B.C.K.I.
You're the fifth house, you're the sixth house from them.
Sixth, okay. I trust Olga, she's a real estate agent, we can talk about real estate stuff. So, listen there. I came here tonight to speak against the properties. The only thing I really knew about was what was listed here, you know, against that. I learned more information again, you know, this is good to hear. You know, fresh eyes before, but you can go to talk to them. I believe some Josh and Mike responded to the plan I had about a neighbor and a lawyer at one point, and I was very physical response. The issue was moved and I was happy about that. The other thing I want to mention was from the meeting here, I appreciate the conversation to give you more information about what you really want to do and also from the board. And I haven't changed my mind, I'm still.
Do you mind telling us why your postcode?
I would rather see the 15-foot setback and whatever the maximum like this, let the some regulations be clear.
May I review?
I'm not a neighbor. I know nothing about, my name is Jan Armentra. I know nothing at all about this particular property, but could someone on the board just say, when we have this wreck of a property that's interfering with the enjoyment of neighbors, why isn't that incumbent upon the person who's made the mess to put up the 10-foot fence rather than a young couple, you know, who just bought a house, sort of thing? Just a question.
Yeah, this is all coming from, like.
Great question.
For, I've known for myself and I believe for the rest of the board, as recently more, more, I can do it.
I mean, if you're going to make him for the fence, I'll write him the fence in my yard too.
Well, yeah, that, that would be my preference, and I think I stated yet earlier, I'm not a fence guy, but the situation, why shouldn't they pay to sell a fence for something that he's doing? But unfortunately, is the application not in front of us, this, we're only the F and we have a vision for?
Quite, that's my own way of thinking, and I don't know if you want me to go up there and audio recording or not. My issue with this whole problem is that, you know, yeah, that's what I'm saying, like I can, I can go. And like, I apologize for my, you know, energy because I have about, you know, 25 years of temper, you know, immigration and frustration, where it dumps into this particular property and what Tom had allowed him to do and completely turned it on by to anything that he was doing, right? So I understand that, you know, he came in front of the, of permit, right? He completely violated every asset club. He continues to completely lap in everybody's face, like, and he's playing a shell game where it just keeps moving vehicles around and whatnot. Right now, like my property is flooding, their property is flooding, not to mention all of this. So at what point is it town's responsibility to enforce what's happening, right? He, like I said, you gave him the permit to do something. He, for all this time, he hasn't complied with any. All the complaints from the neighbors were completely ignored, okay? As I said, thanks to some of the new people that came onboard, things seem to be moving, like I know Josh is trying different aspects and, but it seems like the one person is allowed to, like, the quality of life that everybody has, right? So, okay, well, you know, maybe he doesn't have to pick the fence, but about you leveling the whole property, right? About you taking all the trash, like Corinne was there, we spoke, taking pictures, like, what I'm looking at is buried asphalt under the ground, right? So make him take it all off. Have it, you know, seen it in the law. Like, I don't need necessarily the forest bag, like I love that, when I bought the house, it was a beautiful level yard, a beautiful woods in the back. I understand that's his, you know, right to take the cheese down, but it's, it's not his right to do this. Okay, I mean, what, at what point the town comes in and does something about it?
I think we're at that point, dealing with the court system. Sounds what Josh indicated earlier, that he may need to come back in front of this court. So we will have a public hearing should he need to come back in front of this court. But permits are granted, permits are revoked also.
Exactly. So my, my, one of the issues I have with this particular property as well is the, the suddenly moving D.C. in town, right? Because when we came and we talked about elevation and it's a fact, I'm not what you're initially, and as well as all the garbage and debris that is already buried there, right? But what are we going to do about it? Because you don't know what's buried there. Alex says we just have buried metal in there, you can see with your eyes, the cement and the asphalt, right? The answer was, well, you gotta go talk to D.C., that's their responsibility. Where actually, I actually told D.C., D.C. came out and said it's town's responsibility. Right, so where are we going? Like I, we now live by the length of that. And Tom has allowed you to do it for decades. So who is going to take responsibility for making sure that this is now as sound right?
I think it does.
What I, I don't need the fence, what I need is not live by the length of that. So if you're against the fence, I have nothing else, but as long as we remedy this integration.
And we have, we have our stuff that we will end up having to take as well. So I can't talk for the rest of the court. I know I was not part of that variance, I think it was 2013 if I remember correctly.
Well, it wasn't apparent.
Especially, sorry, especially in danger of home occupancy.
Right, but the issue is, it's not that he was giving that variance.
Sure.
But that variance allowed him to park his vehicles in the park. That's not the issue there. It's everything else that he's done, done about it.
Which is part of that permit.
Right.
It was part of his.
It's that's part of the sharing.
The fill is a different, right? The fill is a different.
The fact that he keeps bringing debris from his jobs and dumping that on, on the property and then spreading it around is not part of his specially used permit for it.
I understand.
I will say I appreciate everything you've said. And all I can say is, for myself, I can't fix what I don't know is, isn't broken. Now, I'm not saying you haven't brought this to the town's attention before. I know this board was very active leading up to this meeting, trying to understand what was happening. We have, we have our triggers that we're able to utilize, as you mentioned, and I'll give a kudos to Josh, Josh has been doing a phenomenal job as well.
I agree.
So I, all I can say is, we are, we are moving forward, we are trying to help remedy this, and we will do what we can within our power as well.
Right, except now it's been just with the new management a year.
Understood.
Okay? And it's only getting worse. So, and while, you know, Tom decides how they can proceed further, right? If they want to dump the tents, and again, I understand there is concern, but he is nowhere near the house. I'm the only one who's going to be looking at it, and I'm looking at it.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments from the board?
May I make a comment?
Sure.
Okay, yeah, just to touch upon the other neighbor's concern about the setback. With the position of our pool and shed, I don't think the 15 feet can be feasible. Also too, it's kind of difficult to tell from this picture, but our property does continuously slow down. So I think the farther in you go, you know, the taller you would need it to be able to get the coverage. So that, that's just the one thing I just wanted to point out, which is, because that current fence that you see, that's not even on the property line. That's actually, the fence that he put up is not on the property line, only that one piece that's angled that way, the back of that, like the, I guess, the part closer to his property, that's more close to where our true property line is. So the original fence was that he put up was set back from the property line. So if we were going to try to put one and then 15 feet in, you're going to be going essentially across our pool and it's going to be at an even lower elevation. So that's, that's just, I just wanted to kind of point that out, just it's a little bit hard to tell from the pictures, but I totally understand, you know, people's concerns and whatnot, but I just wanted to provide some context for what we're looking for.
Thank you. When do you plan on doing the install?
Soon as I can.
Okay. Any other questions? I'd like to move forward with the, the CBA for, for, maybe also for a tight. uh, for, maybe also for a type two action under seater pursuant to N Y C R section six one seven point five, the environmental code? Or?
One second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And you want to read it or? Sorry, did? Can I ask the board any more comments?
Oh, make them.
Oh, yeah, okay. Pretty good. The, um, I guess I, I will throw one additional comment or suggestion to the board as, as we think about moving forward. Um, because of the situation, um, with the neighbor. I'm, yeah. I unders, I understand the need for the fence. Um, I, I suggest or I'd like the board to consider, um, maybe putting a, a duration on the, the limitation of the fence, the dur, a duration of the fence. Um, even being out there, uh, a wooden fence, which I believe is what you mentioned that you were planning on building. Uh, typically has a fifteen plus or minus year, um, lifespan. And is it possible to, you know, once that fence, um, rots out, that this variance ends up going away? And, you know, ideally, not ideally, but maybe, maybe the use of the neighbor's property ends up changing and the special use is not necessary in that particular area anymore? That, that fence isn't necessary. But if it is, then another variance could be sought at that. I'm almost wondering, do we put a fifteen year, um, limit on the variance itself? Or maybe? Otherwise, it's indefinitely with this.
Can we do that? So that's what I've been looking at the last twenty minutes, Oliver. There's precedent that can do that. I was trying to find something specifically in the neighborhood state, but, but I didn't, you know, typically, um, variance is run with a limit.
Right.
And variance and stays there forever.
We accept that. I just, if.
There's, there's covenants that can be, you know, affirmative or restrictive associated with the easement, um, between the joint property owners. I'm not sure whether we have the authority to enter into, I guess what, what would be a covenant, because we could assign it. I'm not seeing anything key, I mean, who exists. Josh, I don't know, you, I've never, I was telling the, the chairman that, we, I haven't had an issue come up. You know, I think here, in, 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 in the context of the potential prosecution, the revisiting of special permit, what goes on with that property, there may come a time, point in time, when fences need, I tend to think that fifty, uh, current landlord would agree to that, I don't think, but I think, but I can't, I can't find any. Yeah, I, I personally am aware or have an experience at that.
Well, residents establish a timing network, when they, when those that need to reconstruct the fence, they would need to, they would need to come back in front of the board. The trade of board, just the situation.
I would be more, more to, to be agreeable to that. My form of thinking is, if in fifteen or twenty years, the fence is no longer valuable and it needs to be replaced, if the tenth of fence is expensive, twenty years in there, it's gonna be even more cost prohibitive. If there's no longer a need for it, I can't imagine that a homeowner would want to replace it if, if there was no longer a need to block an site with view. So it might just kill itself.
The good news is that Tom will be here.
Well, I'm, I'm, I hope I am.
He's part of the original special.
Well, we want that, yes. Is there, uh, I don't know if the board has considered, I don't know if the proposal includes, you know, a fence, a conventional fence that wraps around it into two corners opposed to some kind of angled buffer, more of a buffer than, than a fence per se? So ob, obviously, in, in the picture that's reflected on a monitor, there's a fence that wraps all the way around. Is this contemplating just a kind of buffer to, to?
That fence would be roughly, you'll be forward of that wooden fence, right? You're forward, so that fence, that sort of wooden fence is actually back to.
So just, just on that one.
We put that back.
Just on that one.
Go back to the picture again, Josh, with that fence? So that fence there is actually, I'd say it's about five, six feet off of their property line?
I believe it was, you know, it's at least five feet. And I'll, I'll also mention that the property owner of nine forty-one gravel, um, recently applied for and was issued a permit to relocate the existing fence to the property. So it doesn't really do too much to, you know, screen the view, but.
One of the things with that is, I also spoke with him, um, and he said that he was gonna use the existing panels, which are drying and have been there for a while. So I think, um, in this case too, I mean, obviously it's a cost, um, that we don't necessarily want to have to pay, but I think us paying forward and doing whatever we need and putting a brand new fence, um, is gonna make that area look a little bit better than, um, just putting that existing one back up, so.
It's gonna be natural, it's gonna be natural, you don't paint it, stain it?
There's, uh, we don't know exactly what color or stain or paint, but it's there to be painted or stained, one or two.
Basically, we're just trying to make it look cohesive, I mean, if there's something that you guys suggest, um, like, we're fine doing it aesthetically. We're, we're more just looking for the privacy matter of it, so if there's, uh, stain or paint or whatnot that you think is more appealing, we're very much fine with doing that, so.
Any other questions? Sorry, I wrote, I wrote back to the board, sorry about that, guys.
No, I, I could say that, uh, like I said, we typically runs with the land and it's there for all time to come.
The only reason I put a timeframe to it is just that, is that, you know, fifteen, twenty years, that fence is gonna be rotted and everything kind of stuff. My original thought was just that, is let the fences rot out and then you can replace it and pay for back for variance if they wanna know the tenth of fence, otherwise, the certain.
Because, yeah, then we have to get another permit to replace the fence, and if there's, I don't know, a tick or note, we can put in the address that, you know, it needs to come back before the zoning board, before, be higher than allowable fences, permit to be.
It's still a little more established and timely.
Right.
I would.
But, but it's, uh, we, we've done that, I think, with a couple of sheds over the years, that just, you know, when it comes to replace the second shed, you need to come back to the board and.
What constitutes replacing, um, honestly, if fences are gonna degrade all at once, sections degrade?
Sure, sure.
Are we planning on fixing the fence as it goes, um, rather than waiting until it falls down to replace it?
I will say, you would be shocked, especially with a wood fence, that they typically do degrade, I'm not gonna say completely wholesale, but if you, even if you look at your neighbor's fence, it's rotted in multiple sections and has fallen down in multiple sections. Then you could do one panel a year, but you're never gonna be able to catch up, uh, from that. Your posts are gonna be, and the posts themselves are gonna rot.
Yeah, I think he's just asking, so like, if a panel falls down, are we gonna have to come back and?
No, no, absolutely not. Yeah, if you have a problem with a panel.
Okay, and that's what they, they were just trying to understand, if that was the case, so, yeah.
Yeah.
When it comes time to replace the, the entire reading of the fence, because it's not self-creating, that's just how I.
Yeah.
All right, have we, have we run this, Terrence?
No, we got nothing.
I don't even know how to. It's semi, not out of character with neighborhood, there was a fence back there, but the fence is now gone. This is replacing the fence that was on the other owner's property, but it's taller.
It'll also be, uh, sight of.
And it's out of sight of everybody except the neighbor five forty-five, who's in the paper. Um, so as far as the detriment to nearby properties, um, it will not create a detriment yet. The one end of it, it's connecting up to a chain link fence that's the back of somebody else's deep lot. It's some, because I've got a main street and a couple of subdivisions, there's some kind of walk-in lot lines in there. As far as achievable by any other method, I, I guess I will say I'm not confident that the neighborhood is going to improve quickly enough that there's any other method besides the fence to block the mess that you're currently dealing with. Um, as far as adverse, adverse environmental or physical impacts to the site or to the neighborhood, I think this is actually remedying an adverse environmental impact that was created by a situation that the neighbor took care of. But the fence is not, in my opinion, is certainly not gonna impact, um, the water table or where the water's moving. It's really not going to impact anybody's roof. Um, in this case, I'm gonna say the difficulty is not self-created, because you would not need the fence if it weren't for the difficulty that was created by someone else behind you. And this will be a desirable change, and it's going to at least hide, but you will, but don't.
Neighbor.
Um, anything else that I'm missing? Something else, um, to the variance, or? I think I'm not analyzing that. But if not, I will make a motion to grant area variance for privacy fence located on the lot line at five forty-one Galeboro Circle for applicant Nathan four, and set of fence will be a ten-foot tall privacy fence on the lot line, where a fifteen-foot setback is normally required. And it will be for approximately one hundred and forty-seven linear feet of fencing on parcel number zero seven eight point one two dash two dash three, located in the R three seventh in the residential district.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, um, you have your variance for a ten-foot tall fence. Um, did we include the title in that?
We should condition it?
Yep. So we, we are gonna condition it, um, for the life of the fence. Uh, the variance will, uh, be valid for the life of the fence. Um, once the fence rots out, variance is no longer applicable and you need a ten-foot fence again, you're gonna have to reapply.
Well, all right, do we, do we want to reapply or do we have to come back to the board for an extension?
Okay, we do an extension.
Well, either way, I mean, it means that the board's not looking at it.
It's the same, right, it's the same situation. So, um, you have one year to complete the project, um, you need to, you know, building permit, uh, to sell. And, good luck.
And you comply with your drug.
Oh, yeah, and, and you will comply with the, you need to comply with the drug that was submitted as part of the, uh, application. Thank you. Good luck, guys. All right, next up, we have, um, eleven seventy-eight Jackson Heights, uh, July.
Right, Jackson Heights Drive Living Edition, located at eleven seventy-eight Jackson Heights Drive. Expedient staff in the community are requesting area variance to allow a newer setback plus the ones required associated with construction of one hundred and eighty-six square foot living room addition. And it puts seven seven eight parcel, having S B L number zero eight zero point one three dash two dash three point two, located in an R three seventh in the residential district under section three five zero, which followed by the public tenure of Leicester.
How's it going, Mike? Tell us a little bit about the project.
Uh, my name's Nick Mooney, I'm representing my parents on this petition. Um, thirty-eight, asking for a thirty-eight foot rear setback for a living room addition, backs up to our commercial district. Yeah, that's pretty much it.
Questions from the board?
Just sorry, I didn't say, uh, why could that, uh, the addition go to the east of the design house?
Grade, and there is a large, large tree. Off the back, there will be no trees that have to be taken down.
It's pretty obvious, absolutely. There is currently a deck there, right?
Yes, there is currently a deck there, and the additions actually will fit inside of the footprint of the existing deck, so it will not be any larger than the.
Was there variance issued for that deck? Do you know, or? Uh, do you, do you don't, was there, have you anyone?
I think we just use a ten percent or. It's allowed.
Twenty, yeah, twenty percent. And it backs up to limelight, uh, or the.
Well, and given, not that the limelight property counts, but because of where the fence is with limelight and the buffer space, it's not going to look like it's really too close to the lot line. It's not gonna look this, uh, this tall.
Any, anybody else in the board with any questions, comments? Anybody from the public with any questions or comments? So, no other comments? That, I, um, I'd like to make a motion for a type two action under seater pursuant to N Y C section six one seven point five, the environmental code. For Jackson Heights, um, eleven seventy, Jackson Heights Drive.
Check it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's see. Area, uh, area variance standards, if I wanna, if those are shot. Um, I'd say, this area, uh, this request is not necessarily out of character, uh, it does back up against a, uh, commercial, uh, site, and the house is set far enough back, and this will not be, um, visible from, uh, from the main, main, uh, street. There will, there is not really gonna be a, there's not gonna be a detriment to any of the nearby properties, uh, because of the commercial district and then the, uh, other residential districts are real. because of the commercial district and then the, uh, other residential districts, the real, uh, properties are actually set forward of this, this property. Benefit is not achievable by any other method other than chopping down a, uh, very substantial, um, like, very beautiful tree, uh, that's kind of out there. There's no adverse physical or environmental impacts, actually it's less environmental impacts, but not moving, um, the tree. It's not really going to affect any more ways or anything else in the area. Difficulty is, uh, not self-created, um, due to the way that the property is or the tree is located and the way that the house is situated. This won't be a, uh, this will be a desirable change to, to the house and export footage and, um, value to the property, to the residents. So there's, uh, not a significant, uh, impact.
No objection, any in the board?
No objection, any in the board? Appreciate it. Motion for, uh, variance to, uh, Jackson Heights Drive, uh, Living Room Edition located at, uh, eleven seventy-eight Jackson Heights, uh, Drive. Applicants Maggie and Lee are requesting an area variance to allow a rear setback less than what is required associated with construction of a one hundred and ninety-six square foot living room addition on a, uh, point seven seven acre parcel having SBL number zero eight zero point one three dash two dash three point two, located in an R three single-family residential, uh, district under section three five zero dash two of the code of the town of Webster.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You have, uh, you have your area variance, you have, uh, one year of substantial completion. You have to see the building code, uh, for building permit, um, that I would be able to do construction. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, so, yeah, in the street of neighbors.
Okay.
All right, first touch, we do a seven seven point five. All right, um, eight seventy-seven Maple Drive chickens. We're currently doing a one-year review of the special use permit that was to allow the chickens. And I will read into the record the letter that we received from James Montgomery, who is the opening ordinance officer. Members of the zoning board of appeals to date have received no complaints regarding the chickens kept at eight seven seven Maple Drive, which were granted a special use permit by this board. Please accept this report as my favorable recommendation for the residents to maintain the special use permit the remainder of the five-year period as regards to the.
Okay, well, that was, that was my first board, board meeting.
Is that any gear already?
Yeah.
Josh, did you see if there was a, a little twist to that?
Uh, no.
Did we leave it, six chickens? Yes, so the original approval states that, uh, it was a maximum of six hens. Requires a one-year evaluation of the April of twenty twenty-four zoning board meeting. The possibility of extending the special permit and allowing more hens. That was the language of the original.
Are you requesting more hens at this point?
I was hoping to move up to ten hens. So we got six, uh, Easter, the last one, so I was hoping another batch up to ten.
How, how are you going, that would put you at eleven, because you have to purchase six. I know truckers apply and most do not allow you to purchase less than six.
Okay.
Okay, because I wasn't, I wasn't sure, I thought it was made to the total that you had.
No, unfortunately, when you, with the stores I sell in, oh, I haven't tried to purchase from, um, because that is, uh, Country, yeah, Country Max, thank you, but I thought they were six as well, but I could be wrong.
Make it an even dozen.
How large is your lot? What car is coming a dozen?
The lot is, uh, two acres, a little under two acres.
Where is the coop on the, on the lot?
Um, we don't have a picture or anything, um, we have a garage and it's kind of touching the back wall of the garage, so you can, I don't, you can barely see it from this, for the.
And you can't see it from the road.
Oh, you can't.
Or the line, next to me, but. I check in this morning today, lot eighteen and. I, um.
So it's, it's, it's a long, narrow, um, not really narrow, but it's a long line. Yeah, it's just straight back, you understand this picture? And it's almost the exact width of the garage there, so it's just right behind what you see.
So is it directly behind or is it to the south of the garage? Based on the aerial photo I have, you have a hole in the backyard as well, correct?
Yes.
So is it next to the garage or behind the garage?
Behind garage.
Behind the garage, okay.
So would you need?
Was it, is that?
If, if you were to buy another six chicks, is the chicken coop and lot that you have still sized appropriately for up to twelve?
Yeah, it was, um, it's a pretty popular design and many people say they have even more than twelve, but I, they recommend like, uh, eight to fourteen in it.
Okay.
So it's pretty large.
And there's neighbors?
Yeah.
And the, the neighbors that come back.
There's one subway back, and then there's one across the long driveway, but.
Right.
You can even back again a year out or not? There was, I'd give my suggestion.
Yep.
You can leave it the way it is, and then, that, that's the end of the review. If the board is comfortable with an increase in the number in exchange, having back another plan, see if the number is affected.
That's fair. How do you feel about that?
Free and safe.
What's that?
I'm free and safe.
I'm good, I'm good with, uh, I think, uh, all eleven, right? That would get you to the, to the six purchase, you'd have five at home, as you said, right?
Yeah.
No more than that, so it's a.
I think that's, now, do we need? Do we need a motion for variance or?
Because you're changing the original.
I just amended, make a motion to amend it, report it out on here.
Okay, um.
I'll make a motion to amend the, uh, variance, uh, granted at eight seven seven Maple Drive, SBL zero seven eight point one one dash one dash two eight, to, uh, from allowing six hens to a maximum of twelve hens. This property is located in an R three single-family residential district. We asked to come back in one year for a follow-up to see how, how your neighbors deal with, um, a dozen hens doing the, the egg laying song.
And then to put a term, and hold it standard for five years, so.
Correct. I have a second.
Oh, awesome.
Okay, all those in favor? See them one year.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you shoot panels or?
No, I, I'm the original expectation, I agree with that. Uh, both of them, yeah, which, I was in there.
Who's front?
I'll be doing this like a.
We got approval of.
Oh, yeah, I love it.
So I believe we have approval of.
Oh, all right, well, that's.
If that is longer than it is where we're, it's supposed to be.
All right, so that concludes all of the business of the meeting.
Yep.
Generally, just you have the approval of minutes, so I'll make a motion. All right, I will make you, what, we can start, I'll make a motion to approve the March twelfth, twenty twenty-four minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have the people here to vote on this?
I think it's got to be a deal, and we're.
It's got to be three of the, uh.
Floor members?
So down and out, we're not present, so if I get three other votes, I'll pass.
Well, those other three have, have been there.
Right.
These are outstanding, these are some of the. All right, do you notice there's, now, do you notice your average?
It's on YouTube.
Yeah, so I was there.
No, you were there too.
I was wondering if it was tonight, all the messes.
We got three people from the March twelve meeting.
We got three people from the March twelve meeting.
Oh, March twelve, yeah, my focus, yeah, I'm thinking it's more than February and January.
All right, for the February thirteenth, um, I'll make sure I have the people here. Down in this, so, and January, so, okay, right. I'll make a motion to approve the February thirteenth minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. And the January sixteenth minutes, I'll make a motion to approve those. All those in favor?
You have the right numbers on it?
I do have the right numbers, yes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, no cut out.
Okay. No, I did, in the meeting. Uh, with that, I conclude the, uh, what was it, April sixteenth, um, zoning board of appeals for the town of Webster. Thank you, everybody. Bye.